It is now six thirteen and we were reconvening our regular meeting. Dr. Head, do you have any introductions or special guests?
Yes, a couple of them. One is, I've already introduced Mike Sullivan and I think he's still here. And Cheval Price is with...
Stand up, yeah.
He's with Community Impact and, you know, we have a really... I was telling him I appreciate what Community Impact does. They report it and they report it accurately. Thank you very much. And then we have Kent Flingerman with Commissioner Cagle's office. We have a great relationship with the Commissioner. He's one of my favorite people, so thank you for being here. And then I want to reintroduce, because some of you may not have been here, Jesse Ayala, who is our new Associate Vice Chancellor for External Affairs, Governmental Affairs, and so you'll be hearing more from him. And some of you will be, when we take our visits to Austin and Washington, and we'll be meeting with our legislators and some of the board members. We'll ask you to go with us. So Jesse, you want to tell them what you used to do? What you did before you started here and your relationship with Lone Star?
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor, appreciated. Board members and Chairman Smith, guests. I am Jesse Ayala. I've been here now at the college for about three weeks. I'm going to be working with Dr. Head, as he said, with Legislative Affairs and Governmental Relations, and so it's great to see Commissioner Cagle's office here. I spent the last four years working for the Greater Houston Partnership, which is a large economic development or Chamber of Commerce and Trade Organization, all rolled into one. Our CEO down there, Bob Harvey, called it a Chamber of Commerce on steroids. So while I was there, I was Public Policy Counsel and worked in advocacy. And I know I can't advocate here. I'm here as a resource witness and to have these relationships. But pushing for business-friendly policies, which are very much included education. Several sessions ago, our top priority was early childhood education as the upstream of the skilled workforce pipeline. So happy to be here, happy to be working with the community. And I live in Klein's and my children are Klein's, so I'm very much at home in this community and looking forward to a long and productive time here working with Chancellor and all of you.
Can you tell them your education?
I have, I'm a non-practicing lawyer. I went to law school in New York City at Fordham Law. Did my undergrad at Saint Mary's in San Antonio. And my first experience with Lone Star was as an adjunct. I taught government at Sci Fair back in ten, eleven, and twelve, and thoroughly enjoyed the experience. And to be able to see firsthand in the classroom what we do in the aggregate for ninety-five thousand students was a tremendous experience. And I'm looking forward to working to advance our mission together with all of you.
Yeah, thanks.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
When I first saw his resume and I thought attorney, I thought we need another attorney like a hole in the head.
Hey, I take offense at that.
We do. You want to introduce while we're here? You want to introduce your new attorney? I was kidding for all you new.
Perfect segue into, let me introduce some new attorneys that we have in the Office of the General Counsel. So Pilar Hastings-Smith is right there. Hello, Pilar. And she's worked for us for a few months. And then I think it is Brittany's second week. Brittany Brown is right there. And so Pilar went to TSU and Brittany went to the University of Houston. And so that's them. I'm just wanting to make sure that everyone knows who they are and that I vouch for them in case they show up somewhere and ask you for something you know that they're with me.
Make sure you introduce your other attorneys also, just to remind you.
Sure. Kyle Stone is our intern. So we actually have a pretty robust intern program. So Kyle Stone, I think, goes, you go to Baylor, correct? So he goes to Baylor Law School right now. And then on the far end over there is Deputy General Counsel, one John Rushmore guest. And so that's it, thank you.
I do have to ask, one second. Brittany, what's your last name?
Brown.
Okay. When were you of age?
Thank you, Counsel.
Please disregard the Chancellor's comments.
I have, I have one more announcement, because I don't think he's going to tell you this. But last week, our, there was a meeting of the Community College Association of Texas Trustees, which is the, that's the trustees organization for the state. And Alton Smith, if the board did not know this, he was elected to the Board of Directors. So.
Thank you.
Twenty out of twenty-four, there were twenty-four votes. He received twenty. Well, you're the number one vote getter, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Which was attributed to him and our college system, so happy for him.
Lone Star is a good name, so I had to campaign very little.
Anybody else? Is that it? Okay.
No, I got one.
Oh. Go.
Introduction? No, this is just a notification. Dr. Scott, last weekend.
We're not that...
We're not at that point?
No, no, no.
It sounded like it.
You'll have a chance to do it, though.
I'll count on it.
All right, okay. But now we have to, we don't have a workshop. Yeah. We now have to approve the minutes of our May third, two thousand eighteen workshop in regular meeting, regular board meeting. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
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 Poses, same vote. Ayes have it.
No.
Okay. Chancellor, you're up again. If you have any other, you have any reports you would like to give about meetings that you have been in? If you have none, okay. Now trustees, you have a chance to talk about meetings that you have attended, any announcement, any relevant announcements that you would like to make.
Relevant?
Yeah, to the...
I would like to make some irrelevant.
Well, I'll cut you off if that happens. Okay, I'll go. Okay. Let's start with Art.
Yes, sir.
Any special meetings or that you would like to talk to me about?
No, I don't have any support today, sir.
Okay. Not a problem, you will next month. You don't, none?
Nope.
Dave?
Board committee reports at this time?
Well...
Board committee reports?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure what our committee is called, but it's an ad hoc committee working on the budget process. So Jennifer and her team put together a great system in which hopefully we'll get a first reading of it in August and a second reading in September and a vote in October. And what this essentially is, is a way of balancing in a, in a more reliable way, our revenues and expenditures, particularly as we focus on where our revenues will be derived. So as you guys know, our three main sources of revenue are state funding, student fees and tuition, as well as property taxes. We have no control over anything related to the state budget. So the question is, what do we do with our revenue streams? If we have certain expenses to be met. So rather than having a battle out over every budgetary process, what this does is set what's essentially an equation in place so that it balances itself. So we've set some of those targets and you guys should be seeing that shortly.
Okay, good. And I'll go last. Dr. Holesy, go ahead.
Last weekend, Dr. Scott completed an event called Escape from Alcatraz.
Tell us about that.
It's a, one of the seminal events in the triathlon world where you jump in the water right near Alcatraz. And if you've ever been to San Francisco and seen that bay, it is not friendly. And he swam...
About a mile and a half.
About a mile and a half in waters that I would... I used to sail a sailboat on it and that's as close as I wanted to get to that water. And then he ran and biked and you can count on me never to do that event. I continue to keep on living. I am just blown away by this young man. He has eclipsed me by far. Outstanding, outstanding work.
Thank you.
Did he live?
It was close, I'm sure.
Thank you, Dr. Holesy. Miriam? Ken?
Yes, I had an opportunity with Dr. Wright to attend the Fallbrook Meeting, which is a campus that a church is building. And what I find extraordinary about these three gentlemen that started this church, they didn't accept a salary as ministers. They kept their jobs. And they said they were doing it for the community. And what I really admired is that one of the guys just grew up in the Bronx. The other gentleman is from South Chicago. He was the, one of the first African-American athletes, played basketball for Oklahoma State. And they are really excited about what we're doing here. And, but they made it plain and clear and simple. This is not about them coming here and being educated and not walking out of here with jobs. That's what's important to them, is what they said. They said, make sure you all understand that, that this is all about jobs. And that's what we were talking about earlier. In this area, these kids are not for your college kids. And, but they're doing everything they can for these kids. And they're excited about what we're doing. And the only, the only other person that they haven't met yet, which they said they definitely wanted to meet, is Dr. Harvey Smith. Definitely, because they have a big women's forum and they, you know, to be a part of that. And I know they have a town hall coming up. The other thing was, I apologize for not letting this be known, but we had a group, our African students were invited to the Offshore Technology Conference, which was the African Forum. So they got a chance to meet government representatives from West Africa. And they were real excited. Belton, I can't pronounce the name, Legan, Legania. Benny Can, Canyada. Uchechi Etumuti and Annette Dico, some, forgive me, I know they're probably listening. But they were real excited. They got a chance to meet some of the delegates from especially, I would say Cameroon, Ghana. And the other one was Angola. And they, they went ahead, they were introduced to the crowd. They got up, the young lady that, this was sponsored by an organization called the United States Bilateral African Chamber of Commerce. And they, so the young lady got up and she talked about Lone Star. And after the networking, they had a networking meeting. I had several people come up and say, would Lone Star entertain us doing a community college? And you know, you don't take it serious, because last year, South Africa asked that question. But it has gotten serious to the point to where I actually got information from Morocco, representing Morocco government, because they're saying that they would like to have a meeting. And I'm not sure, did you get a call from the Angola, Dr. Harvey, the lady from Angola? Okay, because she, she, she was interested in a K through twelve. And so, you know, they are, they are really excited about it. I want everybody to understand something that really surprised me is that these delegates that came in representing the country, they all had EB five visas. And an EB five visa says that they have, they have invested anywhere from five hundred thousand to a million dollars to get that visa. And one of the ladies that has EB five visas, she has three kids. Two of them, one is a lawyer. He went to Boston. The other kid is a doctor. But she has one that's left at home and she says, what's the chances of me getting him into Lone Star? Because they're interested in the international drilling programs and those things that we can do to help them harvest their natural resources. So they, they are really excited and saying, we want to... And Belton, I, the thing that made this so much more exciting is that I sent the tape of Dr. Smith introducing Belton at the Chancellor's breakfast. US bilateral Chamber of Commerce sent it to the government. So that representative was there. He was excited about it. And you, you have now gone viral in Cameroon and everybody knows you.
Yeah. Yeah, I was there once.
So I, I was excited about that. And, and I can assure you that next year, they're hoping that we'll provide more students. And they've definitely said they're going to be contacting us. And I opened this up to Dr. Head and says, if you're interested, they're willing to have some, have some sort of discussion as to whether or not they can do a community college. Because, because of Jakarta.
Yeah. Okay.
What do you mean? Oh, yeah, by all means.
Okay. Is that it, Ken?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Dr. Probridge?
Alton, I like what you're doing here. You're letting the people smell the flowers.
What can I say?
I think we ought to, no reason why we can't be normal. Smell the flowers. And I want to smell two flowers with you. I don't, I only have a few meetings left with this board, so I'm starting to get sentimental about it and ruminating about it. And the first thing I want to focus on is the absolute miracle, really the miracle of science. And it relates to you, relates to me, but it's the miracle of science. There was a period there for the last three months where I could not see very well out of my right eye. Just couldn't see out of it very well. And then there was a period where for ten days, my right eye was totally blind. Totally blind. Do you know how hard it is to drive when you can't see? So I used the Braille system. When I hit the car in front of me, I knew I had gone too far. But I want to, this is gruesome, I know. But I want, I want you to know what this guy did with my eye to make it see. He took a knife and he cut it open. He cut the whole eye open. I had my eye on him. A good eye. But he cut the eye open. This sounds awful when he described it to me. I almost wanted to remain blind. He said, I cut your eye open and then I take a scoop and scoop out the inside of your eye.
Scoop it out.
And then he said, I laser it and then I fill it up with a fluid, an artificial fluid. I fill it up with a fluid and I insert a huge bubble in your eye. A bubble, an enormous bubble. It was in my eye, but it was this big of a bubble. And finally, that's when you're blind. You're totally blind in that eye. And finally, the bubble shrinks and shrinks. And then finally, you can see it again. So about a week ago, I got my sight back. I could see. But just think, somebody telling you, all I'm going to do is cut your eye open and scoop it out. Think about that. That sounds awful, but God, it works. I have greater vision now than I've had for a couple of years. When I go see this doctor, and I did this week, you have to sign in, you know? I sign in as Cyclops Magoo. And then people are saying, well, who are you? I said, I'm Cyclops Magoo. And you're just going to have to find out who I am. I don't tell them who I am. They find out. The other thing I want to mention is, is to be kind of sad. I know this is totally worthless, but that's all right. Today was a traumatic day for me. It really was. Because today I signed a retainer to rent an apartment in Oakland. So I'm going. I'm going. I'm going to leave Texas and I'm going to become a resident of Oakland. The neighborhood that I'm moving in, in Oakland, that's a, that's a, that's a good city to go to if you want to get killed. And I'm living in a neighborhood that's dangerous. There have been, close to that neighborhood in the past couple of years, two murders. I'm not kidding, two murders. So I'm moving there. But I feel good, and I want to finish with this. The reason I feel good is because the guy who will be in the house across the street from me, his name is Marvin. He sometimes sits on the porch at night, holding an AK-47. And you feel really safe. And he will say, there will be no trouble on this street tonight. And so I stay on his good side by taking him over a six-pack of beer.
Drunk guy with a gun.
All right, I guess, I guess it's my time. I can't even match what he, what he's talking about. There's a lot of things that I like about being on the board. And May was a month that I really, really enjoyed. I had the opportunity to attend four graduation exercises between Thursday and Saturday. And I was able to see hundreds of students celebrate an accomplishment. And many of them were the first in their families to do so. And I had a chance also to mingle with the parents and I was really happy about that. And I can't figure out how to attend all of them, so I have to alternate from year to year, which floor I go to, because there are conflicts. But I wish I could go to all six of them. I also enjoyed, there were two GED graduations that I attended. And those are my favorite, because they are students that made choices and have changed, have decided to make a different choice and to come back and be successful. One young lady I was so enthused about, and I think it was Montgomery, she wants to become an orthodontist. And she received a scholarship and she was the graduation speaker. And she had an opportunity to get some sound advice from Dr. Holesy on the dental profession. And so she left there really, really, really enthused. And, and the young lady at North Harris, you know, was similar. Some unfortunate things happened to her. Went back to school and she is going to continue in school. So I think that's what all of this is about, is seeing people, especially disadvantaged individuals, turn their lives around through hard work. And that, that was great. I almost come to tears when I talk about stuff like that. I also had the opportunity to, to attend, and I can't even remember the name of it now, but I attended a luncheon over in Palmer's Course. And a group of folks were recognizing Linda Head for all of the work that she has done with her program. And I was happy to see that happen, too, that the community folks are recognizing the type of work that we do here. And that type of work is really, really, really appreciated by everyone. Everyone, everyone's concerned. And lastly, I had a, and this is not the last thing, but the last thing I would mention, is I had a chance to attend the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce meeting. And that was outstanding also, as well-attended. And Lone Star had a table there, or one or two tables. And had another opportunity to see other individuals that are also achieving and making something out of themselves. So it was a very productive month, you know, from, from my standpoint. So with that, I'll move on to the next thing on the agenda. And that is the consent agenda. Items one and fourteen will be consent, will be considered separately. Oh, I'm sorry. I messed up. Thank you, thank you. And I'm not trying to rush to get home either. Do we have any, I didn't think we had any. Okay. I did it right the first time. Okay. All right, consent agenda, start over. Items one and fourteen will be considered separately. Are there any other items that the board members would like to have considered separately? If not, I would like to have a motion to adopt items two through thirteen, fifteen through seventeen.
So moved.
Been moving properly second that we adopt those items. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Item one. Dr. Head, are you going to speak on that?
So, yes. And Rebecca, if you would come up, please. So this is, we're asking for approval to offer a new program, a professional pilot certificate, level one, and associative applied science. This would be offered at Montgomery. And I sent a note and what I've, I wanted Rebecca to kind of go through the highlights. I know a number of you had questions about this, but in our considerations, and we spent quite a bit of time over this, we are aware of the cost, which is about sixty-five thousand dollars. We know that we're concerned about the debt issue. We know what the job market looks like. Salaries, we're pretty clear about that. And the fact that you probably, if you're going to be a pilot at a large airline, that you need a degree. And we know what the market looks like. So just so the board knows, my brother's son-in-law went through Emory Riddle, so I've been through this with him, so I know exactly what the issues are. But I wanted Dr. Riley to come up and be able to answer any questions that you might have, kind of give an overview of what was driving this and her, her perception of this, so.
I do have some employment information that might be of interest for you. There was a dip in pilot hiring after the recession, but the rate at which pilots are being hired at this point has gone steadily up, to the point where in two thousand sixteen, within the United States, there were four thousand pilots hired. The pilot shortage that is projected over the next twenty years is led by Asia and the Pacific region, which will hire approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand pilots over that time period from two thousand seventeen to two thousand thirty-six. North America will hire one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand, Europe, one-hundred-and-six-thousand, in the Middle East, sixty-three-thousand, Latin America, fifty-two-thousand, Africa, twenty-four-thousand, and Russia, twenty-two-thousand. Much of what is driving that is the retirement rate for pilots from airlines, because they do have a mandatory retirement age that's relatively young, at least I think so being past that age. And so that the shortage is accelerating at this point in time and the airlines are actually stealing pilots from the regional airlines at this point. And the regional airlines are stealing pilots from the flight schools at this point, stealing the CFIs from the flight schools. They're just moving that hiring process down. Regional Airlines Express Jet has contacted us and is interested in talking with us about our graduates. They are now paying a fifteen-thousand-dollar bonus after one year of employment once students have begun flying for the regionals. So there's no doubt that it is a long haul from graduating with a CFI to becoming a full-fledged airline pilot, if that is your goal. But we believe, or the reason we wanted to propose this program is because we believe that a community college program offers the ordinary kid off the street the best chance of achieving that dream because of the lower cost of the college credit that students attain while they are receiving that commercial pilot and certified flight instructor training. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
What is that retirement age?
Let me, let me do this first, though, Ken.
Yes.
Now, you've heard Dr. Riley explain that, let's get a motion first.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll answer questions, okay? Moving properly second.
Okay.
Ken, go ahead with your question.
What's the, what's the age that you said it was?
For, for airline pilots? Okay, my brother-in-law just had to retire and I think it was sixty-three. Sixty or sixty-three. He's a little...
Young.
Yes. Yes. Now, he flies private jets now, but he had to retire from Southwest Airlines.
So this particular program, is it mainly, this particular program, is it mainly catered for students who want to practice commercial?
Yes. Yes. The certifications go from the beginning level, private pilot, all the way through commercial pilot and then certified flight instructor.
They have to complete certain hours, right?
Yes, correct.
And that's the, that's the major...
There are, there are a number of flight hours associated with each certification along the way.
What's your pool of candidates for this type of program?
For... For faculty, you mean?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the, the students. I mean, in, in, in general, how, what do we get them from typically?
We, my best source of information for this is the program that would be most comparable to ours, and that is Tarrant County in Fort Worth. And about fifty percent of their students are veterans, and so they are attending school with benefit, with veterans' benefits. About fifty percent of their students are, are self-pay, and about, of those, about, I think they, Mary, you can help me here, but I think he said that of those, about thirty-five percent of that other half are taking out loans to do it. And then there's some small percentage that can actually self-pay.
And I'm not concerned, and, and, but, Mary, you know, Mary Ann, and you guys are, are on top of this. How, how do we make sure that the students from all the regions kind of know about it early enough and all that? Is there some plan to promote it and stuff?
There, there is a plan to promote it. I can tell you, we're already receiving a number of phone calls every week, people asking, "Are you going to start it? Are you going to start it?" So there's a great deal of interest out there already.
Christine, one, one thing I'd like to point out, we know we need a very extensive, a written piece of what's involved, the cost, all those things I mentioned before, that has to be in writing. We also know, and I talked to Dr. Riley, we, we know that we need a very extensive orientation. Students need to know what they're getting into, what the salary's going to be, how long it takes to pay off the loan, if they're taking the max loans out, some will, some will not. And all those other components of it, what the job market, and just be realistic about this with them.
Again, I'll refer back to Tarrant County. They don't do just one orientation for their students. Their students go through a series of about five orientation sessions before they're even allowed to sign up for their first class because they know that students don't absorb everything, especially financial information, all at once. We'll also have a mentoring program all the way through, through the student's graduation. Now, one thing about this certificate, Level One, is that students will be ready to go for their certified flight instructor credential before they're finished with the AAS degree, so they can actually start earning money while they're completing their AAS degree.
Dr. Riley, I have a couple of questions. You cited tens of thousands of pilot openings in the coming years.
Exactly.
And yet, on the justification, or the rationale, I'm sorry, the rationale for this recommended action, we only list sixty-five annual average job openings in the Gulf Coast region.
In the Gulf Coast region.
Huge difference.
That's because there's not a major airline other than United that's actually based in the Gulf Coast region.
So...
So the pilots are hired all over the country.
Okay, but it's my understanding that especially with what would be offered under the AAS, most of those pilots would go first to regional airlines.
First to flight instruction and then regional airlines, yes.
Exactly. So, exactly, what are the regional airlines in our area that our graduates might be able to be hired?
I believe Express Jet is the, the first one, and they are the ones who have actually come to us and, and asked to be able to recruit our students while they're still in the program.
And Express Jet, what's parent company?
It's United is their parent company.
United is the parent company, okay. And, and you...
But there are quite a few of the regionals.
Okay, and you also said that you thought that this program, by us offering it, would provide an opportunity for the average student to have access to this. How does the average student fund sixty-six thousand dollars for Flight Cross in the first two years?
Sally Mae Loans. My son did it.
Yeah, but, okay, so I don't know enough about your son, but right now, today, it was announced that the student loan debt in this country is now one-point-five trillion dollars.
Correct.
And we want to start a program that expects students that don't even yet have their AA to incur sixty-six thousand dollars in debt, not counting tuition fees, living expenses. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. There are only two ways in this country that you can become a pilot. And one is through the military. The other is through a collegiate program or a private flight school. Many of the private flight schools do not afford the opportunity for students to take out loans, so they're, they're out of reach for most people unless they're just going to do a private pilot.
Linda, I, I had the same question. And I interviewed three different pilots that I know. And they all said pretty much the same thing. Two of them were military, but one of them had gone the private route. And they said that the airlines are near desperate. I mean, which didn't give me a lot of sense of security, like, who are they going to really hire? They're going to have to do something.
Who's flying the plane?
Yeah, I mean, but all, all three of the pilots were fly for major carriers. The, the fellow that went the private route, he described his life, you know, going through the, going through what he had to go through. And as he was talking, I almost laughed out loud because it sounded like me talking about paying my way through college and dental school. And I mean, it was, and I have a million stories, but it sounded a lot the same. Seventy-hour weeks, not having, you know, vacations. But I, I asked the guy, he, he's a, he flies right seat for United, and he said, "I would do it over again in a heartbeat." And, and the screening process that Rebecca outlined, that the prospective students, because they're not all just, "Okay, come on, you want to do it here." They, they get screened almost. And if they don't pass the screening, and, and so I went from, "There's no way that I would agree to this," almost, to, "This is, this is the best choice compared to a private, you know, education, going through the, a community college." This is the, they're going to have to do something. And, and the example I'll give you is, right now, in dentistry, just to help you understand where I am, for every two dentists that either die or retire, only one graduates. Take care of your teeth. Yeah, take care of your teeth, or get a young dentist, or, I mean, get a young dentist because there ain't, you're going to have to take a number. And I'm, I would hate to see what an airline ticket's going to cost if I had to win a lottery to get an airline ticket, but something's going to have to change. My notion, I, I have my different ideas of what's going to have to change, but I see this as if they're screened, made aware, not just, "Hey, let's go fly because my dad taught me to fly. He flew for thirty years for the Air Force, taught me how to fly. I can, I can take off and land a small airplane."
The 172.
I, yeah, don't, you, you probably wouldn't want to go with me because I, I never got the bug. But for the guys that get the bug, you know, they become...
They'll do anything.
Dave, with all due respect.
Yeah.
The three pilots that you interviewed, how long ago did they go through their programs and incur their student loan expenses?
Well, the fellow that really did it on his own, he just made the right seat in a 737, so it can't, and he's, he's forty-nothing. So...
Because it's sixty-five thousand dollars, these are not going to be public student loans. This exceeds the maximum annual student loan that students can take out under the public programs. So that means higher interest rate and fewer protections for the buyers, for the borrowers. And not a lot of regional openings.
So, you and I had two totally different conversations with United pilots. My buddy, best man at my wedding, is flying in. We're going to go see a Dynamo game. Saturday, he's flying in from London, captain with United. Doesn't like the idea. I had my reservations about it that I expressed initially, and a lot of them do come down to the price, which I think we've sort of run through at this point. But one of the price aspects that we haven't talked about, which is the cost that's incurred by Lone Star, right? About two-hundred grand. So with, what was it, eighteen current openings in the Houston area? And today, you go onto Indeed and you find eighty-four openings, just for today, for dental hygienists. Costs about thirty grand to go through, get dental hygienists according to the ADA and ADHA. And they both have about the same start, starting salary. So why wouldn't we, as Lone Star, receive a higher return on our investment by recruiting more dental hygienists and opening up those programs?
Well, I can't speak to the viability of a second dental hygiene program.
I mean, the demand seems to be there.
But, but I, I think a person who wants to become a pilot doesn't want to become a dental hygienist.
You're right. But is there currently an underserved community that they just can't get into and get their pilot's license, where we're going to be taking over a surplus?
Well, my, my sense from the people who call and talk to us about this program or who are interested in this kind of program, is that they see it as their best shot in terms of access.
Right, but is there a surplus? Is there a market that's currently not being served?
Yes, I believe there is.
And how many of those would be turned out each year?
That would be turned down?
No, turned out of our program. How many would we graduate? What's the anticipation?
We've run our models based on sixty students per year. I think actually that we will be exceeding that, that amount.
Which means we would also be exceeding the market by three.
Well, I think we'd be exceeding the market because I don't think that the Gulf Coast employment numbers are the employment numbers that matter in the aviation industry.
Okay, but they're cited here, so we'll reference those. In addition to that, we also know that the budget carriers, led by Ryanair, AirAsia, Gulf Air, JetBlue, are pushing down this median cost because they are, as the older pilots are retiring, they're hiring part-time pilots. And what happens also when the older pilots retire is we can also push down this median because you're going to be hiring at a less expensive level, so these numbers are in fact inflated. The counter side of that, and, well, I guess you could say in addition to that, is that if you have all these new people now that we're trying to flood the market with, that will also put a down pressure on entry-level price, entry-level salaries. So I just fail to see the justification.
The, the, the only thing that I heard from all three of the guys that I talked to is if they didn't want to do the Express Jet, United, whatever, there's instructor-pilot jobs.
Forty dollars an hour.
Hang on. Most guys that do this have three jobs. Instructor-pilot jobs, they fly cargo, which is slave labor, but it's easily in the forty-thousand-dollar-a-year category, part-time. And, and so that's how you'll get the fifteen-hundred hours to even take a look at anything else. And so, there's a part of me, if you're talking about somebody, and I told Rebecca this, you have to have a dream to have a dream come true. The only thing my dad ever wanted to do, ever, I mean, ever, is fly an airplane. And for some people, the sixty-six thousand and the years of working like a dog to get fifteen-hundred hours would be like a vacation, because I watched my dad go through that whole thing. He flew for the Air Force for twenty years, and then he flew a desk for ten years, hated it, you know, because he had to fly a desk. So, yeah, the, the, the numbers can look daunting.
The reality of this, either this program's going to work or not. And if it doesn't work in a couple of years, and I'll probably say three or four, and if we're not placing people, and if we're looking at the livable wages, then we would not continue the program. The coordinating board would, also would dictate whether or not we continue some of this.
But in that time, two or three years, there will be financial casualties who are students. If, because we will count them as failures if we consider the program as failure.
If they don't complete the program or don't get a job.
But I would, I mean, I understand the issues, but I would have to say that about any of, we have some expensive programs.
Dr. Riley?
Well, I would say too, oh, y'all, I'll do, I'll go last. Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, my son just finished up his twenty years in Air Force, Learjet Pilot, Sea, Sea Five Galaxy. And I remember when he was sent to Pensacola, fighter, came back and he said, "It's going to all be computerized, so I'm not going to waste my time." And so I'm sitting here looking at mechatronics and combining all these engineers and trucks getting ready to send them from California to Nevada, computerized. I, I'm, I'm just wondering, when is, that's going to have to be a crossing of when this computerization takes off? And, and these, all these pilots are going to be like these truck drivers. That's why I'm having a hard time because I think, I think Longstar got a heck of a mechatronics program and that sort of, and that money should go toward producing those engineers, the combination mechanicals, system controls, et cetera. I just don't see, I don't see this industry, and, you know, I see it five, maybe ten years from now. It's a whole new ballgame as far as being automated, you know.
I think the pilotless aircraft is a little farther out than that. But, but the shift has already been made towards the most sophisticated avionics, where the pilots, while in flight in the larger aircraft, have very little touch to the, to the actual flight. But pilots are, I don't, my sources, which of course are, are like all of these anecdotal, believe that pilotless aircraft are a long way off.
I, I, and I'm thinking, I guess my question is, the person that's going to be in there, because computers are already doing a lot of the flying, so that guy will probably be just specializing in what they call it mechatronics. He'll, he'll be able to, I don't see him being a pilot. I see him being a person watching software that's making sure that...
A lot of what instrument rating is about nowadays is, is...
But I'm, you know, I'm just looking at it.
Yeah, I would like an answer to the question, though, why, from an investment perspective, is this, or why is why?
Well, first of all, the, the college breaks even in the second year, which is pretty early for most new program startups. The contact hour reimbursement rate for this program from the coordinating board is quite high. It's second only to programs like dental hygiene.
But from a student's perspective, those that we are serving and helping, from a, just a dollar-for-dollar trade, as well as for the college, we can get more bang from our buck going to something like nursing or dental hygienist.
Well, let me answer...
Except nursing is full and...
You're right, so we need more spaces. Great idea for two-hundred thousand dollars.
Right, if we had, we have a workforce office that reviews the job openings, and so we've been very careful about, I mean, you mentioned dental hygienists, but if there was a need for that and one of the colleges thought they ought to have it, then we would have done that. And so far, and we have other programs, though, we're very careful about the spacing of our programs just because we don't want to over, overprice, I mean, oversaturate the market. So we could say that about a lot of programs that are successful in some places. We did this with Pharmacy Tech. We want to be really careful about that because we put them, there's only so many openings here. And if we put too many programs out there, then we're going to oversaturate the market. So, I, I hear what you're saying, but we could do that with any number of programs and oversaturate the market. So we don't, we don't want to be duplicating programs. They're very expensive. These workforce programs are very expensive for us to maintain. I mean, we spent thirty million dollars this year on workforce equipment, thirty million dollars. So that's, that's part of the reason why we're just not duplicating programs all over.
You, you mentioned worldwide, a number of jobs that will be opening, or, or they'll be trying to fill. Are the requirements of the candidates the same worldwide?
No.
So, we would expect maybe the requirements of some other countries are less?
Not, not all countries require a college degree. And some of them require different numbers of total hours before you can fly for a commercial airline. In fact, in the United States, the number of hours required to fly commercial varies depending on who you are and what your credentials are. If you're a veteran, it's seven-hundred-and-fifty hours. If you have a college degree, it's a thousand hours. If you don't have a college degree, it's fifteen-hundred hours. So it's, it varies depending on who you are.
Most of these pilots, I, I'm looking at, and you probably with your son, but I'm looking at my brother's son-in-law. There may be only eighteen openings here, but there's eight... There may be only 18 openings here, but there's, there's openings all over the country where there are airlines. And the chances of you being stationed at Houston are really slim right now. He's gone to Las Vegas, he's been, he's in Knoxville right now, he was in Florida, and he's working with Allegiant Airlines. But he went through Emory-Riddle and same situation, $120,000 in debt, but he's paying it off. He's making $75,000 a year, five years out of.
So my nephew, who is 21, flies about three days a week. Usually from Lubbock to Cancun, or Lubbock to Scottsdale, Lubbock to Portland, Lubbock, various places. Makes $500 a day while he finishes college because he's a captain at this point.
The programs are not.
There's, there's money.
None of the programs we offer, there's any guarantees about jobs or indebtedness or it's just not. So.
Have we reached out to other?
Let's get Mary. Go ahead, Mary.
Have we reached out to other colleges that offer these types of programs?
Yes, there are.
And can you tell us more about any success rates, especially with your students inviting jobs?
In, in Texas, there are two community colleges that have active aviation programs. One is Tarrant County and one is TSTC. We've reached out to both of them and both of them provided information for us about the rate at which their students are paying back loans. Tarrant, let's say TSTC provided that information. Tarrant County has not had their program in place long enough to be tracking their student debt repayment just yet. They do have their success rates however, and their stu, their persistence from year to year has been in a class of about, Mary, how many are they admitting per year? Do you remember? 50? They're losing about 10 students a year over the course of a year who don't make. Usually when people wash out, they wash out at the instrument rating, which is pretty early in the program. It's the second level certification.
So they're losing the students because they.
They're losing because they don't, they don't make it through the instrument rating. They can't fly with, without being able to see where they're going.
So it's very selectively.
It's, students wash out in, at that rate, at that point, mostly because they don't know what they don't know until they actually are in that, that situation. So at that point, they would not have incurred $65,000 worth of debt. They'd only be on their second certification. So TSTC told us that their students are being employed as CFIs as soon as they finish that credential, that they're making between 40 and 50,000 dollars a year, that they, that their students pay back their loans in an average of about 10 years, in part because the regional airlines are paying that bonus of $15,000 after their first year of service.
Dr. Riley?
And Rebecca, when I first read the report, the first thing I thought was, gosh, that's lots of money for the kinds of salaries that those individuals received. But then I thought through it. I said, okay, we're a community college. And part of our mission, as I see it, is let's offer opportunities for our students that want to have certain careers. And I said, I know a lot of the students may not fully understand money matters as much as they should initially because my kids, they didn't, they just say, "Charge it, you have a charge card." They didn't think about interest rates and et cetera. But, but what I was thinking is, and I think Dr. Head summarized it quite well, as long as our applicants are well-informed about the total shooting match, and I don't want to say what should be included because I call that micromanaging, as long as folks know and are told what the expectations and the requirements are, why can't we let our students make their own choices about what career they want to choose? Late in life, I chose education, which was a low-paying area, you know, because that's really what I wanted to do. And if there is a demand, if there's a demand for an area, as long as folks know all of the other stuff about it, I think we as a community college ought to give folks the opportunity to maximize their potential and desire. So I've kind of mellowed from first thing, no, 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 to, well, you know, let's see what's out there and make sure we communicate it properly.
I think that transparency is critical.
Oh, yeah.
Dr. I'm sorry, I just, I have one more very specific question. You said you anticipated that this program would break even after two years. How many students have to enroll and complete each of those two years to reach break even?
I believe the model that we said was 60, to start with 60, and we assumed an attrition rate of five students per semester.
So we need to find 120 students total, is that right?
In two years.
In two years to reach break even. So 120 students that are willing to take on this amount of debt.
Well, the, the cost goes down somewhat with fewer students, but because of the staffing. But that, that's what we made our plans on.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, can I, to me at least, it comes down, can, should you let a kid do what he wants to do even if he doesn't know any better? You're going to get a lot of money, you don't know it or you don't think it's a problem. But should I let you do it when you don't know any better? The problem with that is, that right now there are millions and millions of college kids who don't know any better. They are in enormous debt and we read that 50% of them are not going to pay back the money. So if you use that logic to say, kid wanting to fly a plane, get, get a lot of debt, you can't do it because you don't know what you're doing, it's too much money. We got to tell them, several million college kids, you shouldn't do that. You shouldn't do that. They say, "Well, I want to do it." Now, you shouldn't do it. You shouldn't do it. In this case, I would err on the side of saying, let the kid do what he thinks he wants to do. He might be wrong. He might be wrong. But let him do it. Don't let somebody else say, "No, no, it's not good for him." So I would say, run with this thing, or fly with it. Fly with this thing if there are folks who want to do it. Now, are some of them going to get an enormous debt? Sure. But my God, there are millions and millions of college kids in enormous debt. And if we became avuncular with them, that would not be, well, you might want to, but that's not the way to go. If a kid wants to go, long ago, you're going to get in debt. Well, I know, but that's the kids' thing. So I would say yes, but a lot of them are probably going to be sorry.
Any other questions? Go, go ahead.
He called for the question.
Oh, oh, I thought, I thought he had a question. Okay, you've heard, you've heard the motion, all of them in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Was it two nays?
Three.
Three, okay. Six, yes, and three nays. Ken, were you, were you?
Yeah.
Ken. Kyle and Ken. Okay. Where's my sheet? Okay, number 14 is, who's going to speak? You want to speak to Jennifer?
Let me, just a little background. So at the last meeting, we came, and this is about Kingwood. And thus moving forward is with the July date. So at the last board meeting, what we talked to you about was furniture and equipment that needed to go to Kingwood. And this is, this is related to Kingwood. The basis of this though is if we don't move quickly, then we're not going to get Kingwood opened in January. And again, right now, as I mentioned in the board item, in the board meeting, right now our enrollments are down 4%, which is, if that holds for the entire year, and it's down because of Kingwood, that's $6 million hit that we take financially. So in, in my mind, we need to get Kingwood reopened. It's not just a money issue, it's about their students and why we're here. So I asked Jennifer to explain what we're asking for. I want to, I want to make sure that you know, this is for Kingwood only. We're not changing our policies. What we're talking about is an exception for Kingwood so that we can move and not have repeated meetings or have to wait. Because if we have to wait and we miss a monthly, we're not meeting again until August. But if we don't get some of these approvals, we're not going to get Kingwood opened in time. So with that, would you explain how it's broken down and what we're trying to do?
Yeah, sure. And I would say that this is not just related to Kingwood. This is Kingwood. This is the build back of Kingwood. The item last month was for the furniture and equipment, that all the stuff that we need to go inside the classrooms. But this is for authorizing the guaranteed maximum price contracts for the actual construction, the rebuild of Kingwood, the rebuild of all the classrooms that all that furniture and equipment needs to go into. So really what the difference here in, from what we typically do is typically when we have a construction project, we will go get all of the bids and bring to the board a guaranteed, a request to authorize a guaranteed maximum price contract, one, for the entire construction project, for, and with a not-to-exceed amount. The only difference that we are really doing here is asking for the authorization to execute multiple GMP contracts up to, still up to a maximum amount. Because of the expedited delivery we're trying to do with this construction is there's going to be, rather than just one GMP contract, in this instance, we're going to have multiple contracts so we can keep moving as quickly as possible. So the way this is going to, we're planning on working this is the construction firm, Ansle Bryant, is going to go out and get bids on first initially the drywall and fireproofing for all six of the buildings. And so that will be, that's an example of sort of the first GMP contract that we would look to execute. And then from there, they're going to work on bidding out the remaining trades for all six buildings. So as each trade gets built, bid out and is ready to go, we're going to execute that GMP contract so that the construction firm can begin ordering all of the materials that they need, getting all of the people mobilized so that they can begin the construction process. And then after those remaining trades, they're going to then also come back with a GMP proposal for the library and all of the trades associated with the library. So we're really just trying to stage this thing in a, in a expedited manner. So in this instance, the wording of this is to authorize the chancellor to execute multiple GMP contracts, but still in combination not to exceed the $26 million for the build back of Kingwood.
And we would keep you informed. We would keep you informed when these contracts come through so that you know what's going on. And then at every board meeting, we would come back and update you on exactly what's happening. But if we wait until August or September to get the whole thing together, we're not going to get Kingwood open. We're just not, it's not going to happen. So.
Yeah, and I, I think like our first date to try to have the first GMP for the drywall and fireproofing, we're hoping to do later in June, as, as an example. So we're going to be starting to execute these GMP contracts here in June and into July. So yes, we don't want to wait until August.
I think it's worth repeating, this is a, we're talking about an exception for Kingwood. This isn't an ongoing, this is only for Kingwood. This isn't a permanent thing. And if we, under our normal, and you'll see some others be coming in with the other buildings that we're doing, we'll keep all those on schedule, outside of Kingwood, I'm talking about with other projects that we have.
Okay, so was there a motion?
No, I'll just.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, let's do the motion in second first. I need a motion for item 14.
Should we move?
And a second on item 14.
Second.
Moving property second that we consider item 14, we're now open for questions. One for us, the.
Yeah, what's the total dollar amount that will be approved?
The total amount here is, it's $26,878,795.
And you're saying that's going to be over a short period of time?
That is the, that is the total amount to rebuild all six buildings and have them open January 2019.
And normally we would come in and call a meeting and approve stuff, and you're saying that's going to be too many meetings and too much.
Normally, normally we would have the 100% construction documents. The C Mar firm would go out and bid those and we would come back to the board asking approval of one guaranteed maximum price contract for the entire thing. That's normally how we would do that. If we followed that process, we probably would not have that ready for the board to approve August at the earliest. But that means we're not starting the construction until September. And if that happens, then we're not, we're not going to be open January. So we're trying to do this so we can, because right now we have 50% design documents. So we're still working on the design documents. And while we're finishing those, so we're really trying to run multiple parallel tracks here. While they're still finishing the design documents, the C Mar firm's going to go out and bid the drywalling and fireproofing so they can get started on that here in June and July rather than wait until we have the entire package.
Ken, this is really, I mean, at the last board meeting, you approved the same plan. Based on the, with the equipment that we had at it, so that we can, so that we can get Kingwood. The only purpose of this is so that we get the college open.
That was on the furniture, right?
Furniture and equipment.
Equipment, IT equipment.
And this is the rebuild, right?
This is the construction. So this is with the construction manager at risk firm, Ansle Bryant. The board did approve Ansle Bryant back in March. So it is with that construction firm.
Just, I'm just curious about, we have that earn and learn program in Rebuild Houston? Are any of Lone Star kids involved with the rebuilding of this, students that got into that program?
We don't know.
I don't know.
We wouldn't know if they hired them, that'd be fun, but I don't, I don't think so. But Linda Head would have that information, I can tell you that, because she's a, I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Jennifer, as these, assuming that we approve these, approve this, as the GMP contracts are executed, can we receive updates on what's left of the 26 million, 26.8 million? So that we can see kind of a decreasing total?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We'll give it, we'll provide it however you want to see it. We can wait to each board meeting or we don't mind sending you out once we, you know, once we do the project.
Right.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Pass unanimous, one absent. Eight oh, eight zero. Okay. Jennifer, I think you're, you're back up. Yes.
Sorry about that.
You're on the hot spot tonight, aren't you?
No problem. Yeah, so tonight's financial report is for the month ending April 30th, 2018. I'm going to go through parts of this very quickly because I assume when it comes to the budget, you, you all have heard from me.
Oh, yeah.
Well, tonight.
Yes.
So you do see, in this monthly forecast, the 17-point page three, the 17.8% that we discussed earlier today during the budget workshop. So really what I want to focus on in terms of new information is our continued reporting of Fund 35. I'm trying to see where that is. We have spent so far $15.5 million is what we have actually spent so far. Now, remember, we are, we are still estimating total costs of Hurricane Harvey around 40 million. But what we have actually spent so far is 15.5 million. And I would say even with FEMA, there's really not much of an update there. We are just continuing to work that process. So that concludes my report.
So you're projecting at the end of the year, what reserves?
17.8%.
And I want to make sure Cheval knows that, that number. Well, this is the good stuff right here. From a community impact standpoint, we're in great financial shape. So you can talk to our CFO when we get through with the meeting.
Good job, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Well, I presume there was. Any questions? Dave, you're looking at me. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, any future agenda items you would like to see placed on the agenda?
I'm not sure if this is an agenda item, so if it's improper. But for the committee composition, the three of us that make up the policy review committee are rolling off in November. I think someone else should get at least one substitute for one of us so they know what's going on with the policy before the three, Dave, myself, and Ron leave. before the three, Dave, myself and Ron leave.
You know, that's a good suggestion, I have people in mind.
Good.
So I'll come back with something next, at least by next board meeting.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. If there are nothing else, and I hope no one objects, the meeting's over.
Thank you.